Please rise, join me in the Pledge of Allegiance, we'll get started.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic of this country, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Good morning, everyone, thank you very much for being with us this morning on this very important issue. We have a rather aggressive agenda today with a wide array of speakers, I want to thank everyone who's agreed to participate because we have obviously important issues to discuss. Start us off, we have George Gresham, who is the President of 1199 SEIU. Mr. Gresham, please, please. Now, I have to ask you.
Sure.
Always bring a fan club?
Don't leave home without them.
Absolutely, good for you, it's good to see you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you for being here, obviously this is an important topic that affects all of us.
Yes, sir.
You know, I had an opportunity to review your testimony previously.
Yes.
And, you know, obviously, I think we all come from similar backgrounds and we can all relate to issues in our past.
Yes.
In our lives, our parents' lives, and we can all relate back to the issues that we're discussing here today.
Yes.
Let me just tell you a couple of things before I ask you to start.
Okay.
I'm absolutely sure I speak for all of my colleagues here, we believe deeply in the dignity of work, we believe deeply in the dignity of people being able to support their families
Yes.
through labor.
Yes.
And the dignity that comes from receiving a paycheck and being able to provide for yourself.
Yes, sir.
That's part of this discussion.
Yes.
So with that.
Very good.
I ask you to relay your comments to the committee and for yourself and for everyone else who will be testifying here today. You have your testimony, so if you can avoid reading it, that's great, let's have a discussion, and let's go, God bless.
Okay, can you hear me now?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so maybe I will avoid reading it, but I'm just gonna look at some bullets to make sure I don't forget any important points or leave out any important points. People can hear me? Okay. Well, I think we'll try, first of all, good morning to the panel, and I want to thank you Senator Martins for convening this very important hearing, just as you said before I got started, this is so important to the residents of New York, this issue itself is important all around the country, but to the residents of New York, when we found out that if we were to get the legislature to agree to raise the minimum to $15, that 3 million individuals would immediately get an increase, that to me is not a choice, not a choice in making sure that people are able to take care of their families, there are, if you will, so many, and I'll try to stay away from my script because I think something like this can be easily spoken from the heart, and I don't think I'm gonna miss any important major points of this. You know, I've witnessed, I originally was born in the South, my parents moved to New York from the South, not because we didn't come from a beautiful hometown, not because we didn't enjoy living in the South, but because my parents could not make a decent living in order to raise a family, thank you, and so we shared the experience of the migration from the South like many folks did in the 50s and 60s, and similar to what's happening now with immigrants coming to this country in order to make a decent living, and one of the things that I have learned over this time is that people are willing to work very hard to do jobs that most people wouldn't even consider doing in order to take care of their families, in order to make sure that the next generation of their family are able to do a little bit better than them, that has always been the American dream, but somehow, in modern times, with, I must say, with the greed that exists here, we find that working people are working two and three jobs just to take care of their families. When that happens, we also find that the children of those parents are being raised not by the parents, but by the streets, because there's no one at home to give them the guidance. I have with me today Ms. Gibbs, who is a home care worker, who works extremely hard on a daily basis to take care of her client, and then, at the end of the day, is not able to take care of her family unless she were to have a second job, as you said, our own life experiences get caught up in this, I am the son of a home care worker, my mother was a home care worker in the state of New Jersey, and when we went home to visit her during the holidays, there were never a holiday that she didn't ask one of her four children to drive her to her client's house to make sure that they would have Thanksgiving dinner or whatever the occasion was, she would take food from our table to bring to them to make sure that they had a decent holiday as well, and that's not something you do for extra credit, but it's something that you do because of the calling and your care for humanity, but it's very sad, very sad, when that person then can't take care of their own family, and so we are compelled today to ask the state, to ask the legislators, to consider the $15 minimum increase, now, you're gonna hear lots of testimony today that is going to tell you that the people, when they receive this money, this money is gonna spur the economy, that people immediately will spend it, they will spend it before they even get it, to be quite honest, because of the compelling nature of the finances that they have at home, and so you're gonna hear lots of testimony that, you're gonna hear, I'm sure, testimony as to why 15, as if that is some magical number, and in fact, it isn't a magical number, and you'll hear testimony to that, you know, I will say that back when Franklin Delano Roosevelt, proud resident of New York, initiated the minimum wage, if it had kept up with inflation, it would actually be $15 an hour at this point, on a national level, and as we know, the cost of living in New York is even higher than a national level, but to me, the concept of a minimum wage should never be, how little can we pay a person to get work done, but rather, what is the minimum standard that one needs in order to take care of their family for an honest day's pay?
Let me, let me just intercede for one second.
Sure.
And I appreciate the point, but I'm gonna ask everyone to please, let's not do that, and I'll tell you why, because we're gonna have many people up here discussing many issues today, and some of those we all may agree with, some of those we may not, and I do not want this to become interactive, this is a forum for the committee to be able to listen, ask questions, and hopefully inform public policy, I don't want to have that kind of interaction because it may interfere with our ability to have that kind of a discussion, I appreciate it.
Understood.
And I just would ask that everyone please, just please, keep it to yourselves, I understand that it's there, I think we all do, but for purposes of our discussion here, let's keep it, let's keep it to a minimum, so thank you.
I understand that, and I'm certainly, at least the folks that have come interested with me will follow that, we had, we had been misinformed, we were told that the one who makes, gets the loudest applause gets to win the decision.
Wow, well, I guess we're done here.
So, you know, Dr. King, we often like to brag that we were Dr. King's favorite union, those weren't our words, those were his words, and he met with us six weeks before he was assassinated, and gave a speech to 1199 which he called us the conscience of the labor movement, and he used, he wanted us to be a model for the rest of the labor movement, but in that speech, he spoke about two Americas, and he talked about the dignity of work, and he said in his speech that there is no such thing as menial work, that all honest work has dignity and pride, that the only thing that could make it menial is the compensation you get or you don't get for doing the work, and so we are here today to say that in this land of milk and honey, there ought not be any menial work, that all work, honest work, comes with a certain amount of dignity and pride, there's no better feeling than to know you can take care of your family, now, my father, as I said, and mother came to New York in order to better take care of their family, and quite honestly, this is not a plug for the union, but my father basically did every possible job you could imagine in order to take care of his family, the first was live in domestics for a very wealthy family in Great Neck, Long Island, and it was, when I, until I became a teenager, when my father became a Teamster, and was able to get a real living wage for the work that he was doing then, to drive a truck, that changed my father's whole outlook on the world and the pride that he had in himself, you know, I'm old enough to go back to the era when people had landlines for their phones at home, and I guess.
The only one of us here that isn't old enough to remember that is Senator Savino here.
But you've heard stories, I'm sure.
She's seen it on TV.
And so that, I remember though, and maybe it was the budding organizer in me, but from time to time, my teacher would say, I think I need to call to your home because you're disrupting the class, and I remember often she would call my home and the phone was disconnected, and I remember one time being embarrassed in class because she said that to the whole class, your family doesn't keep the phone on, and I remember how embarrassed I was, because until my father became a Teamster and got a decent salary, we weren't able to keep the phone on, that was optional, it was, when it was time to pay the bills, if there weren't enough money left over, the phone was the first to get disconnected, and that happened pretty regularly, but when my father began to get a real living wage, the phones never went off again, I guess to my chagrin, because the teachers could now get in touch with my parents whenever they wanted to, but it is a, is a real story of dignity, is this gonna cost money, it absolutely is not free to make sure that working people are able to make a decent salary, but the benefits that you can measure as far as the economy and how that get boosted, how many people will get off public assistance because they're now making enough money to apply for Affordable Care Act or other coverage as well, and then the intangible things that you're not able to measure, the pride and the dignity and the loyalty that people have to their own jobs and the lack of turnaround, it is something that, I just say shame on other, if we allow other matters to get in the way and not allow those 3 million people like Sister Gibbs here that work hard every day, to not give them the dignity to go home and take care of their families, they would rather be with their families than that second job, and they would rather raise their families than to have their children raised by the streets because they're latchkid children, so I think I did okay without reading my notes, but, but I hope I leave the impression on you of how important this will be to so many people in the state of New York, and I, I just plead upon you, to not only you, but to help influence your colleagues to do the right thing for the people of New York.
I appreciate that, thank you, thank you very much.
Thank you.
You know, I, I'm struck by, again, the narrative, as I said earlier, I had read your, your statement earlier, and you had certain references in there, myself, my parents immigrated from Portugal, and so, very similarly, not speaking the language and coming over with nothing, my mom was a seamstress, my dad worked in construction until he was able to become a carpenter.
Right.
And that was his trade.
Excellent.
And so, I understand.
Yes, sir, yes, sir.
Because that's very real, and that's the story for millions and millions of people, not only here in New York, but across the country.
Yes, sir.
But as we work around this issue, and we work around the issue of a minimum wage, and we work around the broader discussion
Yes.
of the working poor.
Yes.
And we talk about our safety net programs, and we talk about all of the different things that exist today.
Mm-hmm.
And barriers to people having success, and training programs for people in order for them to learn skills so that they can then improve themselves and become a Teamster or a carpenter or any other trade or any other skilled professional.
Yes.
We are lacking here in New York State in terms of programs that are available and opportunities that are available for the working poor today, and one facet of that is a discussion on minimum wage.
Yes, sir.
But we have, we have to have a broader discussion.
Yes, sir.
And so, all of this starts with, I think, a half step back and a broader view of what it is we're trying to do, because I do believe that we do have to provide opportunities for people.
Yes, sir.
So that they can do the same things that your parents and my parents were able to do for us.
Yes, sir.
So, knowing how this effort, not only here in New York State, but across the country.
Right.
Has been literally spurred, encouraged, and promoted
Yes.
by SEIU.
Yes, sir.
I'm gonna ask you, how did we get to 15, I'm just gonna ask, because as, as a person I have an incredible amount of admiration and respect for, and we can still learn a tremendous amount from, our late Governor Mario Cuomo used to say.
Yes, yes.
We campaign in poetry.
Yes.
But we govern in prose.
Yes, sir.
And so, we can discuss the poetry of this, we all can.
Yes.
And we all have stories that can feed very well into that discussion and that narrative, but we do have to discuss this in prose.
Yes.
How did we get to 15, and why, and why is that number different, because when I, I went on the U.S. Department of Labor website, and they have this great calculator on the website, and everyone is more than welcome to go and check and, and plug in numbers, and this is the U.S. Department of Labor's website, you plug in the minimum wage, any number, and they'll tell you what it would be today, adjusted for inflation.
Right.
So you go back to 1938, you go back to 1968, you go back to 197, whatever date you want to plug in, and if you adjust it for inflation, it gets you to somewhere around $11 or so, between $11 and $12 an hour, that is, folks, I'm just saying, it's a mechanical thing, you put it in, you plug it into this calculator, and that's the number that comes up, so I need to understand over time, how are we adjusting that to the numbers we're discussing today, and how does it fit in, and then, and then in the broader discussion, shouldn't we also be discussing those other facets, not to the exclusion of a minimum wage discussion, but to complement it as well?
So, let me, let me answer that in reverse, absolutely, I agree that we, it has to be a holistic, if we really want people to be able to not only minimally, because remember, we're discussing minimum wage here, to minimally take care of their families, but to be beyond that, to hopefully get to the middle class and broaden the middle class, then it has to be a holistic approach, it can't just be about raising the minimum, the educational programs and the kind of trades, training that you're talking about are totally necessary if we're serious about, as well as healthcare, you cannot take care of your family if you're not a healthy person and you don't have good quality healthcare, so all of those are factors, in my opinion, of a civil society, and if you want to do more than just the minimum for working people, you must consider that, so yes, sir, I totally agree with you on that, as far as the number 15 is concerned, I don't think there's any magic to it, and probably, there are probably as many theories as to what in fact, if the minimum wage had kept up with inflation, what it would actually be today, I think the first part of that, though, for us to even have this discussion, is a recognition that the minimum wage has not kept up with inflation, that in fact, the idea and the standards of people working very hard and still finding themselves poor, the living, the working poor, is something that has gotten away from all of us, now, the people that run the computers that provides me the information tells me back when Franklin Delano Roosevelt made the National, that if adjusted for inflation, it would be at the 15 markets, 15 point something is what I've been told.
I appreciate it.
And, and, and so, but I think even if that weren't accurate, I believe that it is, I certainly wouldn't present it here to be shot down by someone else if I didn't.
And, and so, look, I'm not, I'm not, and I do understand that different people have different ways of computing it, I was just using a, a common standard because it's the U.S. Department of Labor's own website, but
Right.
What I will ask you is.
Yes, sir.
If you would provide the committee
Yes.
with that analysis.
Okay.
I'll be able to share with my colleagues, and then at least we'll have the benefit of that as well.
I'd love to do that, thank you, sir.
As far as, you know, some of the other concerns, and there have been people who have reached out, and I think we'll hear from them later today, that when we do consider increasing
Yes.
the minimum wage, in certain respects, it butts up against certain programs that we have in place, and you mentioned that those programs that people will be able to come off public assistance.
Right.
And the concern I have is that, you know, many of our public assistance programs are rightfully so generous. They are, and they should be, and we need to continue to provide help to people.
Sure.
But if the threshold that they press up against
Yes, sir.
causes them to lose that benefit, and the benefit that they lose is greater than the amount of money that they receive.
Receive.
We need, we need to consider, to the extent that it is a state decision and not a federal decision, how do we ramp that gradually so that we don't provide disincentives
Right.
to people earning more money?
Sure.
Because I've heard from, from my own constituents and from people who have reached out and said, you know what, if I make more money, I lose X benefit or Y benefit, and I can't afford to provide for my family.
Right.
I find it immoral that we have a system in place that artificially keeps people poor.
Right.
And so, I think part of our challenge in our broader discussion here today is, let's look at those programs because they're there, we can quantify it, but for some inexplicable reason, those thresholds are so low that if people, especially in a place like New York where they make more money
Right.
because it's so much more expensive to live here, once they butt up against them, they lose those benefits.
Right.
So, how do we address that, because if we do increase the minimum wage
Right.
as a response to try and elevate, and in, by doing so, we prevent people from receiving certain benefits, and some of these decisions are going to be federal decisions outside of our hands, aren't we doing, by trying to help, aren't we actually creating a disincentive and a, and a problem for so many people?
I understand, so there is a reason why Helen Schaub is sitting to my right, she's my Vice President of Legislative Concerns, and so, I'm gonna pass the baton to Helen, it is a conversation that we've had numerous times around this, so.
So, I want to thank you for raising this, because obviously, it's an important question, and I think we are all on the same page, that you would never want to do something that would end up giving people a net negative in terms of their overall compensation and the supports that they have, and I think there's at least two reasons why that would not be the case here, one is the vast majority of programs that, that people use to support their families when they're very low income, actually do not have kind of the cliff that you would be talking about, where you make a tiny bit of money and then you fall off the cliff and you lose a benefit that is very significant, so for example, if you look at Medicaid, you know, yes, there's a threshold, you go over the threshold, but then in New York State, you're eligible for the basic health plan, which has the advantage of being paid for by the federal government and not 50% by the state government, but provides a very similar, similar level of benefit, and it's not till you get significantly higher that then you would go on the exchange, where you do have to then contribute more, but you have significant income that enables you to do that, so everyone who's looked at it, and we'd be happy to provide you with analysis in Oregon, which took a very careful look at this, says that, yes, you, as you move up, and appropriately, the, many of the programs target people with very low income, so as your income rises, you then are no longer eligible for some of those programs, so even if it's true that you have to pay, for example, a little bit more for your health insurance, you have a net positive, and the reason for that is that we are talking about a significant increase, if we were talking about raising the minimum wage 25 cents or 50 cents, you might start to run into some of those problems where the benefit that people lose is greater than the income that they're receiving, but when we are talking about making a significant step forward to actually catch the minimum wage up to where it should be, if it had kept pace, then we avoid some of those problems of making tiny incremental increases that end up with a net negative, so both because most of the programs do not have a sharp cliff, and because we're talking about a real enough increase that people can actually afford the additional obligations that they might have, for example, if they have to contribute more to their health insurance, every analysis that has looked at this says that it is a net positive for people to, you know, to get an increase of this degree.
I appreciate that, you know, it, there are so many facets, and that's why when we discuss the issue, and as so many people have discussed the issue
Sure.
as being one dimensional.
Right.
It's troubling, because, you know, even something as simple as federal income taxes, and the effect of an increase in the person's responsibility to pay more in terms of a federal income tax, so their income goes from 18 potentially to 30.
Right.
And yet, a chunk of that comes right off the top and goes right to the feds, and they don't get to keep it, and yet, in the context of that, they don't keep it, yet, we run up against some of those thresholds that you discussed, and you start to weigh thresholds that you discussed, and you start to weigh in some of the expenses, some of the taxes. And so, the last thing we need, and I think the last thing we can afford to do, is in an effort to try and help people, actually put them in a worse position, as odd as that may sound. And so, again, let's walk our way through this. Certainly, I've appreciated your testimony. Any questions?
Yes.
Senator Marchionne.
First, a question I just would like to say. I think Dr. King would be very proud of you as the leader of your union.
Thank you.
Your sincerity, I feel your heartbeat, not having to use your notes really, and speaking so clearly and precisely. Sorry.
Thank you.
You know, I just, I just wanted to say that. With that, I have two questions. Out of the 80,000 workers that you represent, how many of them are making minimum wage?
Go ahead.
So, the 80,000 figure refers to our home care membership.
Okay.
And they are all making $1 above minimum wage. They make $10 right now.
So, none of them are currently making minimum, but this would certainly affect them greatly?
Well, yes, they would, if they were, they are making less than fast food workers are required to make now in New York City under the fast food order, and certainly would benefit from every raise that is being proposed here.